Commissioner, help me whenever you're ready, we can start the hearing.
All right. Thank you, Debbie. We'll start the tonight's hearing with a reading of the public hearing rules and opening. So if everyone would just bear with me as I read through this statement. "Thank you all for attending this planning commission hearing. Before we begin, I would like to state that in the interest of public and staff safety, the town of Monument is currently following the CDC and Governor Polis recommendations. And at this time, the planning commission hearings are a hybrid, with the planning commissioners, most of them, attending with a limit of 10 people in the boardroom and public being remote, using a WebEx application. Last week, the planning department posted the plan for a WebEx meeting tonight, which included the public's ability to view each project on our documents on-demand portal. Additionally, similar to the Board of Trustees meetings, the public may attend the meeting via registering with our WebEx software. Those instructions were also available on the town website and on the various social media outlets. The Planning Commission's role is to conduct public hearings and to make recommendations for the Board of Trustees about land use matters in the town of Monument. Agendas and packet materials for this meeting are available on the town's website. The Planning Commission bylaws are also on the website, and should anyone wish to become a planning commissioner or alternate, you may find an application on the town website as well. Each commissioner agrees to a nonpartial, objective, and fair review. This includes no prejudgment of the projects. Should a commissioner wish to disqualify him or herself for any conflicts of personal or financial interest in this matter before us tonight, please say so now." All right. Having heard none, we'll move on. For those who are attending tonight's public hearing via WebEx, please ensure that you quote "raise your hand" end quote in WebEx and speak directly to the commission so you can be heard. To ensure a timely and fair hearing, we ask that if multiple people have the same comment, only one person speak on that same subject. Once the public hearing portion is closed, the applicant or staff will be offered an opportunity to provide rebuttal. I will then close the public comments session, and the commission may ask additional questions at this time and discuss the proposal. Thank you. This concludes the introduction. Move on to the first item or second item on the agenda, which is the roll call. I'll pass this off to the planning staff.
Commissioner Bill Lewis. Vice Chairman Sean White.
Present.
Chairman Chris Wahomey.
Here.
Commissioner Martin Trujillo.
Present.
Commissioner Steve King.
Here.
Commissioner Joshua Thomas.
Present.
Commissioner Danny Oars. We have a quorum.
All right. Thank you, Debbie. Let's all please stand now for the Pledge of Allegiance. "A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. Let's move on to item four, which is the request for approval of previous planning commission minutes. I will open, I will open for a motion to pass the minutes as written, as provided to the commissioners earlier.
Mr. Chairman, I have a change to the minutes.
Ah, go ahead. Who is this? I'm sorry?
Under a vote, Commissioner Lewis's name needs to be removed from in favor, and the motion needs to be shown as passed rather than failed.
Okay. Can you?
For the whole, for the... I'm not sure which project it is.
Because we did have a project that was denied at the last planning commission hearing.
Yes. I'm not sure which.
That was number three.
I guess the village is Jackson Creek. I'm sorry.
Yes, that was, that was correct then because that was not in favor. It was a denial, that project.
Yeah, but the motion passed.
Oh, oh, no, the motion didn't pass. Yes, the motion passed for the denial.
But the minute says the motion failed.
Oh, okay.
And it shows Commissioner Lewis as both in favor and opposing.
Okay, we will fix that. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, I'm just reviewing it myself. I'm sorry. Right, so the motion denying was passed in favor, and I see where Commissioner Lewis's name is listed on both in favor and opposed. And I see where the motion failed as well. Just to staff, does the proposed change make sense? Is that, is there any discussion we need to have on that?
No, unless Teresa, do you have any issues with that? I don't know if you're online. Okay. We will make the changes as stated, so it's not confusing.
And just to my fellow commissioners, does it make sense? Thank you. Was that Danny? I'm sorry. You brought that up?
Yes, it was.
Thank you very much for bringing that up. And to all the fellow commissioners, any questions, comments?
No, I agree. That was a good catch by Danny. I agree with the change. So I assume we need to do a new motion to approve with the recommended edits?
Pressed.
Yeah. All right. Well, I would like to move that the January 13th, 2021 minutes provided to the commissioners be approved with the changes recommended by Commissioner Oars.
A second.
Take roll call. Chairman Chris Wahomey.
In favor, yes.
Vice Chairman Sean White.
Yes.
Commissioner Martin Trujillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Steve King.
Yes.
Commissioner Josh Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Danny Oars.
I didn't hear Commissioner Oars. I apologize. I'm sitting here. I assume, I assume something was said and that we can move on.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. It just didn't come through. All right, let's keep on moving. All right, we're here at the public hearing and recommendation. We will move, we're now on to the first hearing and recommendation on the Flynn project at 309 North Woodsworth, used by Special Review UBSR-2020-566. And I will, I'll give to the Planning Commission staff for presentation.
Good evening, commissioners and residents online. This is for a request for approval of the Flynn project used by Special Review. The location is 309 North Woodward Street. The site is bounded by Woodward Street to the east, Third Street to the south, and Vista Montana Lane to the west. The property is .355 acres in size. The existing zoning, the site is Zone B, General Business District. In 1992, a resolution was passed, 1092 was passed, to change the zoning from R1 to B. R1 was single-family, low-density to downtown commercial, which is the business district. The site has a single-family residence with a detached garage on the back of the lot. The single-family residence was previously used as a commercial business. The current owners would like to use it as a single-family residence. The town of Monument has been providing water, and Monument Sanitation has been providing wastewater. The existing surrounding uses include residences, JJ Tracks, and Air Academy Federal Credit Union. Uses by Special Review are uses which, because of their potential range in size, intensity, activity level, land use characteristics, required a special review to determine if a proposed use in development is appropriate in a specific location. The purpose of the review is to assess the compatibility of the use and the scale, intensity, and activity level of a proposed use with surrounding land uses and developments. Uses subject to this use by Special Review process are listed in the applicable Zone District provisions. In this case, is the General Business District. As I said, the proposed use is a single-family dwelling. The proposed project is a 425-square-foot addition to the north side of the existing home to provide a master suite. The home would be a three-bedroom and two-bath property. The detached garage would soon become a seasonal snack bar or ice cream shop, and it will be a walk-up establishment with limited parking, mostly for the trail users. Use by Special Review for the single-family dwelling is a permitted use as a Special Review within the General Business District, which means the following review and approval criteria. The design will keep to the character of the downtown monument. The plan is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. The landscaping is in conformance with the adjacent properties in the neighborhood. Parking and circulation layout provide an adequate and safe vehicular and pedestrian circulation. Adequate, safe, and efficient public improvements such as utilities, community facilities, services are provided with enough capacity to serve the site. As I said, it's already been wastewater and water is provided at this site, as well as utilities such as electric and gas. The plan is inconsistent with the town's comprehensive plan and other relevant town goals and policies. The plan will not create a nuisance, traffic congestion, a threat to the health, safety, or welfare of the community, or violation of any provision of the municipal code. This is the Flynn project plan. As you see, the lot line cuts through the house where they want to put the 425-square-foot addition. They would have to replat this property in order to do so, and they are aware of this. And staff recommends approval of the Flynn project used by Special Review based on the staff report findings that the proposed development complies with all standards and criteria for approval, with the following condition: revised site plan will be submitted for staff approval, which will entail landscaping and parking details. And the applicant is here tonight to answer any questions as well. Matt Seeler from Seeler Construction and Rob Flynn, the owner of this property.
Thank you, staff. And we'll pass this to the applicant.
Everything looks to be in order.
The applicant is here to answer any questions. They don't have a presentation for tonight.
Okay. Well, now move on to public comments. I don't know if anyone's there live. I don't believe that's the protocol here, but Drew, is there anyone online wishing to speak?
At this time, we do not have any hands raised, but it's always advisable to give it a minute or two, just in case.
Will do. If anyone just, we'll pause for about 30 seconds or so. It'll feel really long, and then we'll see what happens.
I do see the hand raised. Ms. Green, you are able to just come off of mute whenever you are ready.
Okay, Ms. Green, if you will please state your name and address prior to making a comment?
Am I unmuted?
Yeah, you are. We can hear you.
My name is Kathy Green. I live at 315 Vista Montana Lane, which is across the street from the applicant. I just have three items that I would like the commissioners to consider as conditions, if you don't mind. Number one, the Vista Montana has no parking on the street, never has. Now, doesn't mean that people don't park on the street, but when they do, it causes a problem because we back out of our garages onto Vista Montana Lane, and when there is a car parked on the street, you'll hear brakes squeal, trying to stop before they hit that car. It's, it's a little problematic as it is. I'm afraid if people parked a car on the street to go to the snack bar, it would be more problematic. I'd like to ask the commissioners to consider a condition of having the applicant put up or pay for the town to put up no parking signs. Again, for a street where already you cannot have parking. The second condition I'd like you to consider is that you put in no drive-throughs. Now, I know the applicant is not at this time proposing a drive-through, and I also know that the design guidelines for this area of town highly discourage them, but it would be comforting for those of us right behind it to know that that will never become a drive-through that empties out on Vista Montana Lane. The third condition I'd like you to consider is closing time. There is a distillery and bar across the street to our south, and it's never been a problem. It's not noisy, you know, no, no problems there. But I'm asking that you have the snack bar closed by 9:00 PM at night to prevent the bar closing and having all of their patrons come over to the snack bar, which is literally feet from my driveway, and there are eight houses there.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Drew, are there any members of the public online raising their hand for comment?
At this time, we have no new hands.
All right, assuming there's no other members of the public who want to comment at this time, I'll close the public comments, and I'll move forward with the commissioner questions and comments portion of this consideration. So commissioners?
I'm happy to start. This is Steve King. Debbie, is Vista Montana, is that a private street?
Yes, it's an alleyway.
Okay, that's what I thought. So it doesn't, it's not in the town's jurisdiction to put up signs or anything on there?
No.
Right, thanks. And what about a drive-through? Would that be permitted at all?
No, not in the downtown area. It's, it's not permitted at all.
Okay. And then I have one more question. Is, is there any issues with the Board of Adjustments for replating this site? Does it have to go through them or just be a replat?
It's just a replat because there's a lot line that crosses where they want to do the addition.
Okay, so that doesn't need to get a variance or anything?
No.
Okay, great. That's all I have.
I've got a quick question for the applicant. Since there's not a proposed site plan for the, to show the parking, you know, obviously, I know the exact house and area that this is, living in the town. Is that something you can speak to? What that parking will look like, what street they're coming in and out of to get to the parking? How many parking spots are expected, anticipated? Have you done a site-fit plan to see how many parking spots will fit?
At this time, we haven't done any kind of plan for that. It would enter through, I believe, Mont Vista, right there, because that's where the other entry point is to the property currently. So it goes from Woodward through, currently across the upper edge of the house, the north side of the house, and then it has an exit onto the Mont Vista road there. As far as the parking is concerned, there'd probably be five, at least four or five spaces at the minimum for the area that's there, because we would look at putting up a fence, kind of to separate the two areas, the house and the commercial part of it.
And the follow-up question for town, this, I imagine to MECO, this would have to be asphalt parking with curb structures. I mean, it's...
Well, it depends on the use for this, for downtown area. It could have crushed asphalt, too, but depending on if they need to put a heavy vehicle on there, but if they don't, it'll be normal asphalt for that, like you would see in a regular parking lot.
Okay. Is that going to cause any drainage issues?
We have to receive the site plan first to determine how they're going to do it.
Perfect. Thank you.
But I don't believe so for four parking spaces.
Yep.
Martin Trujillo, question for the applicant, sir. One of the questions, looking at the property here, see how that it will be broken out in relation to the replotting. Talked about the parking. What is the intent on time? Obviously, it's going to be seasonal, as you identified, with the ice cream shop and with the snack shop. What do you propose are those times that you'll be operational?
That I first is to get the house prepped and ready. So, you know, hopefully here within three or four months for that part, granted, we get the approval. From there, I think they're looking at a year to get into the planning stages for the actual end of it.
Sure. Yes, sir. Okay, spring or fall, let's say next spring it's open, and you've got an ice cream shop. You're catering to the local populace of Monument. As they start coming in for, let's say, a weekend at the, at the farmer's market, we're going to run into, just like Catherine had mentioned, was it Catherine? Kathy had mentioned about the parking. What do you see as the volume of people, let's say, that are coming to that farmer's market down the road, you know, coming through the shop there as it opens up? What do you, what do you see as a grand vision here, you know, as far as the volume that you would produce?
Yeah, sorry. I don't expect a significant amount of volume across there. I think, I think we're thinking fairly minimal. I think there is parking on Third that would be accessible, plus what we can do on the lot. And again, we haven't done the plan, but the plan is to expand the back of that lot a little bit more up to the fence lines to get as much parking as we possibly can out of that space.
Okay.
Because there will be no other use on the back of the lot. There's also a shed there that will be removed.
So it's catering to the monument citizens more so than anything else? Yes, sir. Last question, catering to that, obviously Catherine had mentioned, what are those hours? Again, once the distillery is located across the street, is that going to be, I guess, catered to that crowd? And I'm not making any judgments on that crowd. I'm just saying that is that going to be in addition to support it?
It's not. It's expecting to go for people going to the trailhead. I think that's our main drive on the, on the business as far as that goes. And we'll be living in a house, too, so we don't want loud noises late at night either. So I don't necessarily know about locking me into exact times.
No, no.
I don't know that I, you know, I don't expect it to be open late, no.
And again, you know.
For that, for the bars to come over afterwards.
Sure. No, and I commend your ability to, again, bring the community together for that. You know, definitely thank you. And I think that was just one of the questions wasn't clear on. I'm not trying to lock you into time. I just wanted to see what your goals and objectives were in order to bring that community together. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I do have a correction regarding Vista Montana. It is a public road, and the town does maintain it.
Okay, okay. So then just to follow up real quickly, then, if there was to be a no parking sign there, that they were putting a no parking sign there, it would need to be on their property that just says, you know, customers, no parking in alley or something to that effect, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
One quick additional question. You said that you'd look at expanding that back lot area to where you'd take the asphalt parking as far back as you can go?
So as far up to, it'd be to the south. There's a bit of lawn, there's a strip of lawn that's about five or six feet along that edge, and we would go up that fence within that space to try and make sure the parking is sufficient and not.
To the south, so Third Street?
Yes.
Okay. And there's no, for staff, there's no setbacks that they have to?
Yes, there is setbacks for the business district. I don't know off the top of my head, but we have it, setbacks for the business district.
Okay.
In our code.
And we'll follow that up.
Yeah. When they submit their site plan, we'll make sure it goes through the proper review of what's allowed in the business district and what's not.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner White, and I've got a couple of questions. My first couple of questions are actually for the staff. Is there already a special use permit for single-family residents in, for this property?
It's not, it's not a permit. It's a special use by review. If you want to change, it's a permitted, it's a use by Special Review. We have a list, under the business district, we have a list of permitted uses, and then we have a list of uses by Special Review. And in accordance to our code, if you want to change your use, you have to bring your use to the planning commission and the board to get it approved.
Okay.
So there's no permit right now.
Okay, so this special use review is the occupying that structure as a single-family residence part of what we're deciding here tonight?
Yes, that's the main reason we're here tonight, because originally, it looks like a house, but it was always used as a commercial business. So now they want to use it as a house, so now it has to go under review, and the planning commission and the board has to either approve it or deny it, or prove conditions. Yep.
Great. Yeah, I was confused. I thought we were just looking at the addition and not the actual use of the overall structure.
It's that they want to do the addition to the current house, I want to call it, because it looks like a house, not a business, but it was always used as a business, and they want to do addition to that structure, as well as be able to use it as a single-family resident. And a single-family residence is a use by Special Review, and that's why we're here tonight. And they would like to use the detached garage in the back as a seasonal snack shop or ice cream, for mostly for the trail users to use, and that's what they want to specialize in. It's not to have a group of people like Lolly's Ice Cream to be showing up and getting treats at that capacity. It's just for the trail users to use as they go by to get a drink or snack or something before they head home on their bike.
Yep. Got it, got it. That makes sense. I'm tracking. So my next question is, do all the zoning design standards apply to this residential special use, or do they get an exemption because they're not the standard usage in the, in the business district?
We have uses, we have standards that we have to use in the business district once they submit their site plan.
Okay, because I was looking through that, and there are things like an average height of 1.5 stories and a Florida area ratio of one to one, and I don't know, will this property meet those criteria once the special use is approved?
Yes, with a 425-square-foot addition.
Okay, okay, got it. And is there a specific parking requirement that, a formula on a minimum number of spots that needs to be provided, given, once it's built out and operational?
Yes, there will be, depending on the square footage of the garage.
Okay, and so you'll make the final plan before you can calculate what that minimum number will be?
Yep.
Okay, great. Well, those are all the questions I Okay, great. Well, those are all the questions I had for staff. And now for the applicant. My question is, do you have an advertising plan? Is there like a sign or anything like that that you're planning either on or off property to try and alert people to the fact that you guys are there?
So we were hoping to put a sign on the corner. Nothing is set at this point in time, but we were hoping to put a sign on the corner so that we could but we'd obviously have to work with you guys to determine what we're allowed to do.
Okay, got it. And any thoughts of trying to get a sign or something near the Santa Fe Trail, if that's your target audience?
Yes, so the goal would be to put the sign on Third and Vista Montana corner so that we could get access, people coming up and down Third and obviously over on the trail.
Okay, got it. Do you envision making any exterior changes to either one of the structures? Either your primary residence or the snack bar itself, once this is approved? Or is it going to be as is?
We will probably consider what we need to do as far as refinishing that garage, possibly. There's no, there's no plans to do it at this point in time. And as far as the house goes, since we'll be adding on, we will be putting up new siding on the house. But we will keep within the character of everything there. It may change color slightly. I don't know if that needs to be reviewed, but if it does, we can definitely talk to you.
Okay, but generally match the existing siding that you have?
The goal is to keep the fence the same look and feel. We love the way it looks. We just want to get it a little newer than it is.
Okay, great. And then lastly, parking is one thing, but if your target is the Santa Fe Trail, I would recommend, or have you already thought about bike racks?
I haven't, but that's definitely, yes, that would be a definite plus.
Okay. Great. That's all the questions that I have tonight.
Any other commissioners who would like to pose questions or comments?
Okay. All right. Okay. Just even internally, anything to talk about? I take the silence as a no, but just want to be sure. Okay.
I'll just say something about the sign and the operating hours. I mean, I guess generally I don't have much of an issue with having them put a sign that just says, you know, no parking in the alley. I don't know if it's necessarily up to us to regulate the hours that they can be open. I, I'll leave that up for discussion.
Yeah, I guess just, you know, thinking out loud, my, I'm a little confused on what exactly is being proposed, at least right now at this step. I got some clarification based on Commissioner White's exchange. But it still seems like there's a lot of thinking that, or I mean, planning that needs to be done, especially for this snack shop. And including the comments from Commissioner King and Commissioner White. I mean, my own would just be general accessibility. How individuals with disabilities would get there. But I don't think that that's really being considered right now with this. So that's just me thinking out loud. That's all I got.
Would you like me to clarify anything for you, Commissioner Rahomey? Regarding what's being proposed?
Yeah, I would appreciate one more time, Debbie. I know you're
No problem. That's okay. It's one of our first used by special review for a long time. So I understand the questions and concerns. But mainly is being proposed right now is that the residence, the the site used to be used as a business and now they want to use it as a single-family residence. And in order to do that, it's a use by special review and it has to go in front of the planning commission and the board to be approved. For them to move further into their site plan review. So in order to do a site plan, the reason why they're going to do a site plan review is because of the ice cream shack. If this was just changing the business to a single family, there wouldn't be a site plan review for that. But since they are going to be doing that in the future, that's the whole point of the condition that was posed in my staff report. But for this particular reason tonight is to change the business to a single family and then possibly in the future, use the detached garage as an ice cream shop or snack shop in the future. But right now, the owner's currently main concern is to change the use from business to single-family residence.
Thank you, Debbie. And regarding the condition that you included, a revised site plan will be submitted for staff approval, which will entail landscaping and parking details. Are there
The snack shop.
Right.
Regarding that.
And so when that, the revised plan is submitted, it will just go through staff for approval or other consideration and it won't be necessarily brought back to us, right?
Correct. But they would have to follow the standards proposed in our ordinance regarding parking and ingress and egress to get out of there for the parking. And the keeping to the small-town feel and the architecture of the downtown.
Thank you, Debbie.
Debbie, I have a quick question for you, for the staff. And this is really to Commissioner King's point. Is it within our purview to stipulate operating hours? Does that fall within the realm of assessing?
No, it's something, for Kathy Green was a nice suggestion and the owner will take that in consideration, but that's what they can do is take it into consideration. And I don't see them wanting to have it past 9:00 PM anyway for this type of use. Because it's mostly for bike use and the sun is down by 9:00 PM.
Yeah, I think market conditions will drive its closing time more than anything.
Correct.
And then as far as the no parking signs, can, is it within our realm of authority to condition that the town provide no parking signs?
I would have to talk to the Public Works Director regarding that to see if we can do something for that.
Okay, so since we don't know, would we want to just add it as a consideration for the town?
Yes.
Okay.
As a consideration, yes.
Okay. That clears it up for me.
All right. Okay. I guess if there's any other comments or questions, I think we probably would have heard them, but one final shot. Any commissioners want to speak out right now? Okay. All right, do we have a proposed motion, given what we've talked about in the proposed condition from any commissioner?
I'll make the motion. This is Steve King. I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the Flynn project used by special review based on the staff report findings that the proposed development complies with all standards and criteria for approval with the following condition that the revised site plan will be submitted for staff approval, which will entail landscaping and parking details. And that the town consider no parking signs in the alley for the residents to the west.
I second. This is Martin.
Vice Chairman Sean White.
Yes.
Chairman Chris Rahomey.
Yes.
Commissioner Martin Trujillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Steve King.
Yes.
Commissioner Joshua Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Danny Ors. It's been approved. Six-year.
Thank you, staff. We'll move on to our second matter, which is the UPS final plat. PDP SP-2020-547. I'll pass back to staff.
Good evening again. Final plat UPS Distribution Center filing number one. The site is off of Squadron Drive and Woodcarver Road. It's part of Falcon Commerce Center. It is 16.915 acres in size. Falcon Commerce Center Phase One Preliminary PD Site Plan approved in October 5th, 2020. And the UPS final PD site plan was approved on January 4th, 2021. It's Lot 1, it's 736,800 square feet. The plat is consistent with Phase One Preliminary PD Site Plan and UPS Final PD Site Plan. All applicable codes, standards are met. Staff recommends approval of the final plat for UPS Distribution Center filing number one based on the staff report findings that the proposed development complies with all standards and criteria for approval. And then Brian Weiss with Ware McCombe, who is representing UPS, is online for any questions.
Okay, so we'll move right into public comments. Drew, do you see anyone online with their hand up looking to make a comment?
At this time, we have no hands.
Okay.
Soon as I said that, all right, we am in a we have Mr. Duncan Bremer. I'm going to move you up. And his audio is connected, so Mr. Chairman, whenever you want to open it up.
Thank you, Drew. Mr. Bremer, if you can, just please state your full name and address for the record.
Whenever you're ready, sir, you can come off of mute.
Mr. Bremer, if you're there, we, I can't hear you. Drew, how are things looking on the technical side?
As far as I can tell, his audio is connected, but it's still on mute.
Okay.
All right, now can you hear me? Looking for that little microphone. Finally found it. Duncan Bremer, I'm resident, live at Woodcarver Road, 15050 Woodcarver Road, behind me. And thank you very much for hearing me. My comment is really that the plan shows a whole set of easements along the west side of the property, south side of the property, along the Santa Fe Trail. And it's not clear to me that there's any area between the fire lane and the end of the property, the west and southwest side of the property, for any landscaping. And so the question is, is there going to be room for landscaping? And if so, how? And how will you, how will you assure that?
All right, thank you, Bremer. Drew, anyone else online? With their hand up?
Not at this time, so I'm going to put the slideshow back up.
All right, we'll just, another 10 seconds or 15 seconds or so for anyone else online if they want to put their hand up and make a comment. All right. Drew, one final check, anyone online with their hand up?
No new hands.
All right, thank you, Drew. We will close this portion, public comments, and we'll move into commissioner question, comments. I'll leave it to the commissioners. You have the floor.
I understand, this is Commissioner White. I understand someone is here from representing the development. And maybe that's Mr. Weiss. I was, I was wondering if maybe he would like to provide an answer or rebuttal to the public comment about landscaping?
Yes, Brian Weiss, Ware Malcolm, 990 South Broadway, Suite 320, Denver, Colorado. There is landscaping as well as a retaining wall along that west side that was addressed and reviewed. I don't have it handy right now, but that was part of the site plan that was approved earlier last month. The details for that were part of the site plan?
And this plat still allows for what was in that final site plan to be executed and all of that landscaping and retaining wall?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, any other commissioners like to ask a question, pose a comment? All right. Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and move forward and ask that commissioner pose a motion on this particular plan.
Yes, I didn't realize you raised your hand that you wanted to speak. Yes, you may come up to the podium and speak. Oh, the table. No, no, of course, no.
We have a And I live at 15050 Woodcarver Road. I apologize for my voice.
One sec. So Debbie, I'm not there, obviously. It's just a member of the public is
Yes, a member from the public would like to speak. I didn't know she wanted to speak on this project and we just found out she would like to speak.
Okay, I have an issue. If any other commissioners have an issue with just reopening the public comments briefly, that's fine with me. Okay, so please, ma'am, if you just can state your name and address and what you have to say.
Okay, my name is, I'm sorry, I don't have much voice tonight. My name is Michelle Bremer and I live at 15050 Woodcarver Road. My concern is, again, about the landscaping. The trail going along that property gets tremendous usage. Whenever it's a nice day, starting pretty much at dawn and going till dusk, there's a steady stream of people. And as, as development comes into our area, there's less and less pleasant places that the public can walk. And I know because a lot of them end up coming up our driveway. And coming, and they think they've discovered a nice private park. And they like to come in and admire my sheep and pat my dogs and do all that nice stuff. And I, my concern is, as development increases, people are looking for nature. They're looking for trees and birds and bushes and all that nice stuff. And if they just have a concrete retaining wall and a great big concrete building, that's not really fulfilling what the trail is for. And I know this is private property and people get to do what they want with their property. But I would just like to emphasis, emphasize the importance of landscaping. And with, with maintenance of the landscaping. If you just plant trees here, they die. And so it's not just a question of planting a few trees or bushes. There really has to be careful consideration of how you keep those trees and bushes alive. And I think, again, as things get more and more built up and more and more developed, especially north of Baptist Road with that whole subdivision going in there and all that commercial property, the trail is going to feel less and less like what it was intended, which is a place where individuals and families can be out there enjoying the fresh air and enjoying the views of the mountains. So it's just a plea for very careful consideration of, of landscaping along that trail.
Just letting you know, landscaping was approved in their site plan and I could send you a copy of that if you would like.
I'd like to see that, yeah.
Yep.
And so is that final, like, do they have the trees and the bushes and stuff?
Yes.
Yes, it was approved at the last hearing for the project.
Okay, so that's done.
Debbie, this, this, I'm sorry, this is Brian Weiss from where Malcolm again, Debbie, I don't know if I'm able to share my screen at all, but I do have landscaping plans that I can show.
Yes, Drew's gonna give you that ability to share your screen.
Hey Debbie?
Yes.
So I wanna, you know, maintain order in terms of, you know, some of the interaction with public and staff and all that good stuff. So how about this? Any other individuals there to make a comment while we have the public comments section open right now?
I cannot believe so. We don't have anyone else making public comment for this project.
Alright, and Drew, again, just to be sure, no hands were raised right?
No, we have no new hands, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you very much. So let's now reclose the public comments. And then for the applicant, please go ahead and present what you can or what.
Okay, let me, give me a second here. Let me know if and when you can see the plan.
I see it on my screen.
Okay. So this, this is the, the path, this is the trail right along here where my cursor is right now. Everything along here, and this is split into two, two sections here, northern section and southern section, this is the northern section. So everything you see here is landscaping all along the way. And then here is the southern half. Along here as well. This big black, little difficult to see, but this big black line right along here is the retaining wall, which I believe is. It, it's not, it's not a concrete wall, it is a, it is a paver wall, so. I do believe we may have. Now, we don't have something here, but this is some of the detail of the landscaping that's going in in terms of the trees and shrubs and things like that as well. Let me, I believe, I believe actually a picture of the retaining wall is on the civil sheets, so give me one more second here.
Sure.
And just, to my computer is very slow.
That's alright, and just to be clear on procedurally, we're at the commissioner questions and comments, and I'm gonna construe my request to the applicant to clarify this as one of our questions and.
Think page nine on this package is where that picture is.
Yeah, I don't have to go to another file, unfortunately. No, to relevations. I'm sorry, I was not prepared to pull these drawings up for this. Well, like I said, these, these were approved last month, so I didn't think they were gonna be an issue.
And if you're not able to visually depict it, that I, the general statement about the landscaping, I think will suffice.
Yeah, I don't have it here, I apologize. But yes, it is, it is gonna be a brick retaining wall. It's, it's not a concrete wall, and it is raised about five or six feet higher than what the trail is right now. And there is, like I said there, you can see the landscaping here again, all along, along that trail path.
And this is Commissioner Wohomi, Mr. Weiss, is there? Do, do you recall landscaping at the, say, bottom of that five foot retaining wall as well as the top, or just?
Yeah, yeah, let me zoom in just a little bit here. Again, you can see the retaining walls kind of right along here where my cursor is at right now. That, that thicker black line that you kind of see there. And then we do have shrubs and things on the, below that here, as you can see.
Okay, thank you. Alright, any other commissioners wanna comment, question?
This commissioner ours, the only question I'd have is, how high is that shrub we're gonna be with regard to the, the height of the wall?
I can't speak to that right now, I don't, don't have an answer for that.
Was that discussed at all at the, at the approval meeting? I can't recall.
I don't believe it's gonna be the same height as the wall, it's just gonna be lined against the wall.
No, yeah, it's not gonna be five or six feet tall, it's, it's, it is gonna be lined against the wall.
So in effort to, Mr. Weiss, to try and assist a, a, a public comment a little bit more, the obviously Colorado, very little rain. Do you know if there's a drip system?
I believe these are drought, drought resistant landscaping materials. So we do have an irrigation set of plans as well for this project as well, so I, I think there is sprinklers or a drip system.
So there is irrigation as well as native grass planted?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
This was all discussed at the, the site plan was approved.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I, I think the, the issue at hand tonight is, is just the plot, but, you know, however, I can answer any questions from the site plan that was approved and I'm willing to do so.
Alright, well, thank you, Mr. Weiss. Any other comments, questions from commissioners before I move for a motion?
Alright.
So I'll go ahead and move that the planning commission recommend approval of the UPS Distribution Center filing number one, final plat. Based on the staff report findings that the proposed development complies with all standards and criteria for approval.
I second that motion.
Commissioner Danny Oars. Commissioner Steve King.
Yes.
Commissioner Joshua Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Martin Trujillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice Chairman Sean White.
Yes.
And Chairman Chris Wohomi.
Yes.
Has been approved six zero.
Alright, thank you, and we'll move on to the final matter for public hearing and recommendations. Number three Sanctuary Point filing number nine, final plat DA dash six dash twenty twenty-one dash five seven four. I'll hand it back to staff.
Good evening again. The overall site lies north and south of Sanctuary Rim Drive, and this is in the final phase of Sanctuary Point. Seventy-one point one two acres in size. Phase three final PD site plan was approved January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty. There's forty-five lots, six tracks, and three streets. The lots range in size from sixteen thousand one hundred and ninety-four square feet to three point three seven six acres. The tracks will be owned and maintained by Tribeau Metro District. The plot is consistent with the PD site plan, and all applicable code standards are met. The areas for A through F for the tracks will have open space, a pocket park, trails, buffer, landscaping, public utilities, and drainage, which will be thirty-two point eighty-seven percent of the total area. And there will be forty-five lots, and the single-family residential units will be sixty point forty-seven percent of the total area. And staff recommends approval of a final plat for Sanctuary Point filing nine, based on the staff report findings that a proposed development complies with all standards and criteria for approval. And Lauren Morland with Baptist Road Investments is here to answer any questions.
Alright, thank you, staff. Having, I guess, no additional presentation from the applicant, we'll move to public comments. And I'll turn to Drew for his feedback regarding online participants. Anyone with their hand up, Drew?
Uh, yes, sir, we have Mr. Kenneth Kimpel, I'm going to move him up. And then whenever you're ready, Mr. Chairman, to, to tell him to come off of mute.
Mr. Kimpel, welcome, and if you can, just please state your full name and address and, and what comment you'd like to make.
Yeah, good evening, board. Kenneth Kimpel, one six one, or question, one six one five one St. Lawrence Way, Promontory Point, just south of Sanctuary Point Development. First, I'd just like to make the comment that I appreciate listening to some of the questions that you had on some of the other projects that were being presented today. So hopefully you'll ask some questions after I bring up some points as well. I do have some concerns, again, with this continued development without addressing Sanctuary Rim Drive. Sanctuary Rim Drive is only, it's an access road off of Glen Eagle into Sanctuary Rim Drive. So I'd like to know what the definition of access road is, because years ago that was built for access for some vehicles and some construction. But now it's become a main thoroughfare for Sanctuary Point residents to use. And that access road that connects, it's not marked by street lanes. It's not lit, so at night, there have been cars that have slid off that small access road because it can't, it can't hold two vehicles going opposite direction. So it's not an actual road. So I don't think it meets the criteria that's in the municipal code sections. Part seventeen point forty point one hundred for the phase planning, where it talks about the design to provide for cost-effective roadway, utility, and other infrastructures as the plans are being developed. Also, I'd like to bring to the boards attention is municipal code seventeen forty tac ten, paragraph L or Lima, and then seventeen forty tac eighty, paragraph A through C, about the density. And seventeen forty point eighty talks about Monument adopted comprehensive plan, which I don't think this is being met by having a completion of an east-west connector, plus the buildout from Sanctuary Rim Drive over to Higbee Road. It also talks about compatible with surrounding neighborhoods and traffic considerations. And that's what I'm keying in on, is that all flow from Sanctuary Rim Drive is going down Glen Eagle onto Baptist Road, which the El Paso County Traffic Study states is already saturated. There is a plan at one point in time for Home Place Ranch, which is supposed to come online, that was supposed to address the concern of the access road to be built out to Higbee Drive. But since Home Place Ranch is on hold indefinitely, what is, what is the new development procedure? What is the board's plan to Q and A all this development without having that road being developed out to Higbee like it should be? That was part of the agreement a long time ago, and back in two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen, when all these phases were being developed and proposed, these things were discussed. And what I haven't seen, and what I tried to bring to the attention last time about the last proposal, were, were these matters about this road is not being developed. It's only an access road, but there's no talk about what's the plan for the extension going out to Higbee to alleviate traffic that is now congesting on Glen Eagle, that has nine bus stops on it, number one. Number two, as an example, some of you may recall a couple of months ago that there was a brush fire off of Highway twenty-five down by North Academy. They stopped all traffic, and they turned all that traffic back northbound, and everyone exited on Baptist and one oh five, which congested everything for a small brush fire. So if we have a major fire, what is the escape plan? Everyone's gotta flush out of Sanctuary, off Sanctuary Rim Drive onto Glen Eagle to Baptist Road to get to where? Where that road is not built out where they can use Higbee as well. So I asked the board just to consider some of those municipal, municipal codes that I mentioned, and ask that, ask those questions about what's the due diligence of completing Sanctuary Rim Drive to a formal road to make sure that their accidents aren't going to happen, number one. But then what's the plan if he, if Home Place Ranch is on hold? How does that, according to the comprehensive plan guidelines that you're supposed to follow? Now, what's the new plan? Is it, is Classic going to step in and help build out Sanctuary Rim Drive accordingly? Or is it gonna maintain as an access road until whenever? I know it's, it's a lot, it's a lot to sink in, but I, I gotta hit it, and I gotta keep bringing this up because, again, at one point in time, these things were talked about back in two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen on the planning commissions and at the Board of Trustees. And I think this is dropped off where it's not being brought up properly to discuss as to what is the way forward according to the comprehensive plan like we're supposed to do with the development and the safety and considerations for the communities surrounding these developments. With that, I yield, and I, I can answer any questions you have.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Kimpel. Drew, I'll turn back to you. Any other participants online for comment?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, we just had a Robin, Robin Parrish, I believe, and if I mispronounced that, I apologize. I'm gonna move them up, and then you can ask them to come off of mute when you are prepared.
Thank you, Drew. Robin, if you can, please state your full name, address, and your comment.
Uh, my name is Robin Parrish, I live sixteen two thirty-one St. Lawrence Way in Promontory Point uh, off of Glen Eagle. And Ken made some very good points, but I would like to further add that many of the things that were said to be required uh, when that access road got approved for Sanctuary Point, because Home Place Ranch never got started, and so they weren't going to actually build a real street. Monument had agreed that there would be traffic monitoring. And I, I know that there have been some police watching for speeders, but never at the time when the, the builders are racing through here before seven AM and then after seven PM when they get off work. So there's a lot of speed activity, large, very large equipment going up and down Glen Eagle at a very quick clip. Speeding, there were supposed to be the speed signs, monitoring people's speed and warning them to slow down. That's never been done. And so that, that's my comment, is that access road was meant to be an access road for I guess, just emergency egress. The more houses they build over there, the more residential traffic is going to be coming along with the builders and their equipment. And Monument has done very little to monitor the speed and, and safety of that road. That's my comment.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Parrish. Drew, any other members of the community who would like to say anything online that you can say? Drew, any other members of the community who would like to say anything online that you can see?
Mr. Chairman, at this time, we have no new hands. Oh, we have someone in, we have an in-person.
Okay. Thank you very much for identifying. All right. Whoever, I'm sorry, whoever you are, but if you can, please step up to the podium and/or other method being used. State your name, address, and your comment.
Yes, my name is Jim Stewart. I live at one-six-five-six-zero Pettigrew Place in Higbee Estates. And I really only have one question, and that is, is there a plot plan built for the site? And is that available to the public?
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Can you repeat your address? I'm sorry, I'm just trying to take a note.
That's one-six-five-six-zero Pettigrew Place, Monument, Colorado.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. All right. Drew, anyone else online or in person that you can see who wishes to make a comment?
No, Mr. Chairman, we have no new hands.
Okay, I'll just give it a few more moments before I close the public comments. Okay. All right, having one last check, Drew, anyone else that has raised their hand or is otherwise present for comment?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll now close the public comment portion. And we'll move to the commissioner questions and comments, and I'll leave this to the commissioners to begin any discussion or questioning.
Mr. Chairman, it's Commissioner Hours. With regard to the comments that were made up from Mr. Kimpel and Ms. Parrish, those don't seem relevant to the motion, the project that is before us. I think they need to be discussed, but I think they probably should be discussed down under the non-agenda items. Because that access road has already been approved, we can talk about, and I think we should talk about that being amended by the board for something, somebody to take care of that. But with regard to what is before us today from Sanctuary Point, they're in no position to do anything about that, to the best of my knowledge. Am I correct?
Yes, you are correct.
So I'm not saying those matters shouldn't be discussed, but I don't think at this point in time. That's my, my suggestion.
And Mr. Moreland, I believe that in the past, you've addressed this at previous meetings. So if you, if you'd like to take a moment to address Sanctuary Point again, readdress Sanctuary Point.
No problem. Lauren Moreland, I'm Vice President of Classic Homes, and I'm also the Project Manager of Sanctuary Point. I can start out with Mr. Stewart's comments, probably the easiest. I did receive a call from one of your neighbors looking for that same map, and we have that on the Classic Homes website under the Sanctuary Point tab. If you scroll down about two-thirds of the way, the third tab on the right will give you the approved zoning and sketch plans for the site, and that will give you lot layouts. It won't give you dimensions like the plat will, but it will help you understand if you're looking at adjacency against your property, it would help you understand how the lots align with yours. So I think Debbie was speaking to you offline that she could help you with that for access, but that's also on the website, on the Classic Homes website, if you'd like to look at it. Yes, sir. Yeah, you're welcome. And then as far as Ms. Parrish and Mr. Kimpel, Mr. Kimpel was actually sitting Chair of Planning Commission during our first final plat filing for PD Site Plan Two, which consists of two-hundred-and-seventy-three lots. At time of the PD Site Plan Two approval, we had initially anticipated connecting traffic through Kingswood Neighborhood, which is a county neighborhood, not designed with a right-of-way width to handle the traffic being pushed through there. So on about the eleventh hour, we made a concession, worked with the Fire Department, both Chief and Fire Marshal Baumgartner to reassess the traffic safety study, traffic impact study, to evaluate pushing the flow out on Sanctuary Rim Drive. And we also, at that point, made a concession to build off of our property, which I have not seen done in any jurisdiction in my twenty-six years of Classic Homes. And so we were required to put a full-flow connection. We were granted an easement, an access easement from Goodwin Knight, who is the owner of Home Place Ranch. And so we were granted that easement. Tribe View worked with us on the maintenance agreement, along with the town of Monument, for a twenty-four-foot mat, which meets county road standards. Ultimately, Glen Eagle Drive is a arterial, which is designed for ten thousand traffic counts per day. Ultimately, Sanctuary Point, with this filing nine, ends up at six hundred units, round numbers. It's about ten traffic units per day per unit. And so you're looking at about six thousand traffic count, but obviously that's going to disperse, which the traffic impact study goes into detail on which percentage will likely go east versus west. And so we've worked through all that. Also, at the time of sketch plan and annexation, we had to provide a master traffic impact study. That's before we got into the granular level of approving these various PD site plans, which there's three of, two-hundred-and-fifty-five units in PD Site Plan One, two-hundred-and-seventy-three units in PD Site Plan Two, which is the center section, and then there's only seventy-two sections in PD Site, or seventy-two units in PD Site Plan Three. And so initially, it was contemplated on six-hundred-and-fifty units and a sixty-five-thousand-square-foot church on the site. And so the traffic that would generate, not just Sundays, right, multiple days of the week. I know fire safety has been, has been a concern. And I've mentioned Firewise Community. Mr. Kimpel has pushed back on that in regards to, it's really kind of bogus, and really it was designed for more of a high-force-type community, or some of the stuff you might see in woodmore, five-acre lots, without urban improvements. And so with the urban improvements and the right-of-way clearing that we've done, typically, we clear one-hundred-and-twenty-five to one-hundred-and-fifty feet wide. You got a sixty-foot right-of-way, plus your utilities on the front of the lot. And so actually, Dave Root designed the Firewise manual. Really, we're outside that scope because we've, you know, we've got urban fire breaks at that point. And so I know Mr. King has stated at each phase that it's disappointing in the future. He understands that we had this approved long ago. In the future, there's few properties like this with the amount of trees and the landscape that we had in Sanctuary Point. But on the other hand, it did improve safety. Everybody talks about the fire safety, and that, in fact, the amount of trees we cleared, I think we did a very responsible job of doing that, leaving a lot of tracks and open space, a lot of trails. And we benefited the entire northern community, southern end of Monument, with those fire breaks. That's going to give people the ability. All the materials on the homes are type-five materials. Those are fire-resistant. It's stucco finishes, cementous siding, cementous soffits, type-class-five roofing. And so all of these things have benefited on that connection through Home Place Ranch. That was a eleven-hundred-foot connection that we obviously gained the easement, contemplated the traffic flow that would move through there via PD Site Plan Two and Three. And actually, Glen Eagle was designed with the ten thousand trips per day to handle Promontory Point's traffic flow, the flow coming from Sanctuary Point, and the approved PD Site Plan that was approved through Goodwin Knight for their PD Site Plan One, which is everything on the south end of their property. And so while I understand the residents of Promontory, and if you live in a neighborhood and you have new development next to you, there's obviously change, but you hope that you've designed in front of that. And when Tribe View Metro Districts One, Two, and Three, which aren't affiliated with Tribe View Metro District, were set up, you know, and I think two thousand and three, two thousand and four, the primary source for those metro districts was funding of building Glen Eagle Drive to what it is through Promontory Point to handle future traffic. So these items were contemplated. And so I know it comes up frequently in Planning Commission that we need to do better for future of anticipating this. Well, we did do a really good job of that because Glen Eagle Drive is set to handle Promontory Point, PD Site Plan One. The discussions have been had in regards to the connection to Higbee. And I know, Mr. Kimpel, and I'm not here to speak on behalf of Goodwin Knight and/or Home Place Ranch, but that that project has stopped. I just talked to Bry Canep, the Vice President of Planning Operations for Goodwin Knight, last week on when they're going to start their, their first filing there, because we have some water and sewer interconnects through that connection that we have to make work together. And Bry Canep committed on, yeah, we should be planning utilities around the same time that Classic Homes is planning utilities in the final phase of Sanctuary Point. And so our engineers are working with their engineers. We had multiple traffic studies through HR Green, who Tribe View hired, to reanalyze the traffic counts. We had Jeff Hodston with LSC rerun the traffic reports. So these conversations were a huge topic of discussion during our PD Site Plan Two approval. And it was evaluated by Tribe View, by a third-part, their third-party engineer, along with our traffic consultant. And everything was found, and Fire Marshal Baumgartner and Chief Trudy at the time, all reviewed that from a safety standpoint. So whether you like it or you have an opinion of whether it works or doesn't work, I'm not the traffic expert. I'm not the fire expert. I have to lean on those experts. I have to lean on my consultants on traffic, environmental impact, fire, safety. And all of those marks were met when we brought that in and got our PD Site Plan Three approved. And ultimately, the big, the hardest PD Site Plan to get approved was PD Site Plan Two. And that's where this, all these various items we're discussing today have been contemplated. So I appreciate you giving me the time to rehash through that. I know we've been through that through each filing up there. Mr. Hours has heard it a million times, right, at this point, but for the record, want to get that out there, that all of this was contemplated in length. And I know it feels like you sit here and staff brings in recommend approval, recommend approval. What you don't see is that I've got two years into this phase with Jennifer Jones, prior to Debbie, and I've been here with Debbie and prior to that, you know, Larry Manning. So this isn't an overnight, hey, we need to get this approved tomorrow. This is, we've been working on Sanctuary Point since oh five. It's a really long, well-thought-out process.
Thank you, Mr. Moreland, for revisiting those concerns in detail. Appreciate that.
Real quick, Mr. Moreland, when you look at the display that you have here on the project summary, Drew, if you can go back one more, it shows there's an error on the layout of that. You look at Glen Eagle, Glen Eagle is to the west of Kingswood, in between Kingswood and Leather Chaps. Is that correct, going north?
It is. And actually, that was brought up during our last Planning Commission meeting for filing eight, which is kind of south, southeast of where it says site.
Yes, sir.
Highlighted in gray, the lower portion. So yeah, that's technically where you see Sanctuary Rim Drive bisecting the two areas that are shaded. That's where that eleven-hundred-foot connection runs through Home Place Ranch. And you are correct, it's not showing Glen Eagle depicted on this particular.
Perfect. Is there any way that we can get a up-to-date, current display of that, obviously, within this, within the Planning Committee as well? I think in the future, that may be an issue that we may have to take a look at, you know, when we look at those other things as the community's already identifying for all the other variables with traffic and such, as we address those.
It's just, this map just doesn't show it, but it's there. Yeah.
Other commissioners, questions, comments?
I'll just, I'll just make the comment that I agree that it's not our position to determine whether the roads are adequate or not, or that the fire mitigation is adequate or not. That's why we have experts for that. And we're just here to, to approve the land use based on recommendations from them as well as staff.
And I, I'd just like to make the comment that, you know, I appreciate Mr. Kimpel, Ms. Parrish, Mr. Stewart, all coming and bringing their concerns or rehashing prior concerns. It's certainly not lost, and it's obviously not lost on the applicant. It's, it's certainly important to make, and I never want, you know, certain, and I don't want the public to feel that there's anything that is being pushed through because it's just understanding the process and where we're at in this process. And as the applicant alluded, this is, this has been a long time of a development. So just given where we're at in this process, and to Commissioner King's points, what we have, the ability to limit or otherwise scrutinize at this time, I do believe there's not much we can really do regarding these types of matters, whether they're traffic or fire saturation of a road. And, but I would implore the, the community members to continue to, you know, just voice their concerns and to do so as they have been, which is civilly and appropriately. All right, any other commissioners, questions, comments? All right. Having heard none, would any commissioner like to present a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to present a motion to vote. Commissioner Joshua Thomas moved that the Planning Commission recommend approval of Sanctuary Point filing number nine, final plat, based on the staff report findings that the proposed development complies with all standards and criteria for approval.
Second?
Commissioner Martin Trujillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Steve King.
Yes.
Commissioner Joshua Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Danny Ors. Vice Chairman Sean White.
Yes.
Chairman Chris Wihomey.
Yes.
Has been approved, six-zero.
All right. Thank you, Steph. I will move forward with opening up for any non-agenda public comments. So I'll turn back to Drew. Anyone in the crowd or online?
I'm going to move Mr. Kimpel up. And Ms. Parrish, if you want to make more public comment, I'll leave your hand up. If you do not, please put it back down. I want to make sure I don't miss anybody. And then, Mr. Chairman, whenever you are ready, you may ask for unmute.
All right, I, it sounds like Mr. Kimpel, if you, again, just please state your name and, and address and your comment.
Yes, thank you. Kenneth Kimpel, one-six-one-five-one, St. Lawrence Way. Two comments. Number one, addressing the Vice President of Classic Homes. I'm not here to harp on Firewise Communities because I drafted up Promontory Point's Firewise rules and regulations and got them approved through David Root as well. I will say that a wildfire, I'm sure that we're all going to apply common sense. Wildfire is not going to distinguish between a Firewise-approved home or not. So that's not my point. I'm not pushing that. I'm not pushing back on the Firewise. My concern was there is no evacuation plan set for the town of Monument on the east of Highway twenty-five. That was the point that I was trying to address in previous discussions, not Firewise. There's no evacuation plan whatsoever put in place. Second, the Vice President of Classic Homes said that he's been at this a long time, and I was a previous board member. I respect him and I appreciate the hard work and effort between the staff and the developers. However, you know, he stated that the development project started back in two thousand and five. Well, according to seventeen point forty point eighty in the densities, part of the consideration has to be compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood and impact, and everything around us is changing since then. You're going off of plans that started fifteen years ago. I go with the El Paso County traffic studies off of Baptist Road, not what we've done here because I've talked to Tribe View and we've done a traffic study on Glen Eagle ourselves that we kept private just through our HOA, not to bring up to anybody of what their recommendations were because of our concerns with the buses and the nine bus stops that were on Glen Eagle. I'm just bringing to the point that you, as board members, are a sanity check, if you will. You're a trust but verify of what's being brought to you in a timely manner of when it was addressed. Promontory Point was discussed for development back in early two- Promontory Point was discussed for development back in early 2000s and the residents of Kingswood and the residents of Jackson Creek. Brought in traffic problems and their concerns. Classic Homes' original plan was 290 homes. They went back and they reduced that size to 260 just to. Accept that the density of the public housing around the areas was growing as well. And that's what I'm trying to bring to the attention as we have these plans. And now you have Sanctuary Rim Drive. I am not trying to stop the development of Sanctuary Point. I respect it. I appreciate it and the community looks beautiful. However, my concern is, yes, traffic, it's always going to be. Number two is. Sanctuary Rim Drive was connected as an access road, and I'm still asking what the definition of the access road is. And no one can give me the answer as to what an access road is meant to be. Our fear in our community and our HOA is that Sanctuary Point is going to be developed out. People are going to be using the access road coming and going. That portion that just over a thousand foot portion. Is not wide enough for two-way traffic. There's no, there's no designated lanes, no striping, there's no curbs. More importantly, there's no street lighting. If you drive up there at night, you will see how dark it is. Not only with wildlife crossing in that area, but there's been cars that have gone off that bend. Because they, they're, they're misjudging it. So my point is, what is it going to take for the town of Monument to sit there and go, we need to come up with an alternate plan? If Home Place Ranch doesn't come online, why Sanctuary Point is growing to use that area? A lot like back in. The phase of element for section two and section four, that's when all this was discussed back in 2017 and 2018. To develop the road going across to Higbee to alleviate some of the traffic concerns. But it was also going to be a, a road that was going to be built that was proper. That had striping, that had street lighting, that had stop signs, that had speed signs. None of this is on there right now, and that's, that's our, that's our concern in our community is when will that access road become? And be built into a main road, a main connector or the completion of a main connector. And our worry is that if we don't have, if we don't talk to developers to help out build that or put that into their budget to build that like they probably should. It's going to fall on the town of Monument to pay for that. And the town of Monument is strapped. As an example, the completion of Jackson Highway from the YMCA going out to 105, that's been put on hold. Because they don't have the, we don't have the money. So how are we going to, how's the town going to have the money to build a, a normal road up here? Or are they going to rely on Tribe View to cough up money? Which they're already doing for the sewer and water connections. Matter if they're building an easement right behind my house. They just ruined and took out hundreds of trees to build an easement. For this Sanctuary Point development to connect a water line to the water tank up off of. St. Lawrence Way. And I've talked to, to Jim McGrady about that. He gave me a heads up because when I was talking to him. About getting rid of some, some areas for firewise concerns, he said, well, we're going to take care of this area anyway. So that's when I found out about. That water development and the pipeline going through. But back to my main point, it's that road. When is everyone going to consider? Who is going to finally build out that road? So it's properly accommodated for the volume of traffic. That these, that this was being all built up 15 years ago. Again, Home Place Ranch isn't online. It's on pause. So is a town of monument going to absorb that cost to make that? 1,200 foot stretch into an actual road? Or are we going to go back and ask? Which I think we should do is ask the developer who can easily afford that or absorb that cost by pushing some of the. Well, it's going to, it's going to end up being. You know, another surcharge on the homeowners, just like it is for Promontory Point with the Tribe View Metro number two, we're paying for Glen Eagle. For the next 30 years. So who's going to pay for that connection going there? And the cost is going to be pushed on to the residents. And I can't, I can't see that classic can't afford it. But what's the alternative if Home Place Ranch is delayed? They're going to have to figure out the sewer water and then the roadway. But I think you as the board can push that issue and ask those tough questions. And provide some kind of pushback onto what's the plan? What's the future? Instead of rubber stamping these sites and then we're going to have to go back and reinvent the wheel and go, oh, by the way, now we have to deal with this. When, when town of monument doesn't have the money. I yield back for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. I'll ask Drew if there's anyone else online or in person with comments that are non-agenda related.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, we have no new hands and no one onsite.
I, I think it's appropriate at least to just move on, but also, you know, respectfully with Mr. Kimpel's comments. To just address or otherwise communicate between ourselves and the next section of the meeting, which is really the reports and communications. I feel like this is a time that if there is additional discussion with the commissioners, it's appropriate now. So I'll go ahead and open it up to the commissioners. If there's anything additional you'd like to speak on. Please speak up.
Commissioner Oars, with regard to the access road, Debbie, can. We're not prepared to talk about how to take care of that access road. Just could a, can an agenda item be placed for the next commission? Meeting?
Yeah, it can be, but if a resident or commissioner has any concerns regarding anything regarding. The town such as an access road, you can make an appointment with staff and we can go over that with you as well. Just, I just want to put that out there too. So residents know they're always welcome to make an appointment with staff. If they have a list of concerns that they staff would like to go over, but regarding the access road, Home Place Ranch is responsible and they will be responsible for that. As Mr. Moreland mentioned, he has been working with them and they are going to be putting that road in the, the continued Glen Eagle Drive.
They're going to put it in, but do we have any idea when they're going to put it in? What kind of priority it has to them? Because I have to agree with Mr. Kimpel. That's a very unsafe access road. There are people that walk that road. All the time and they're not supposed to be walking it. There are signs that says no pedestrians. You're not going to stop that. It is a very narrow road. It does not have curbing. It does need some kind of priority. It was assumed when all this was put together, I was sitting here then, it was assumed that Home Place Ranch was going to move with a little more speed than it has.
The reason they haven't moved because of this class of COVID, I talked to them over the summer regarding that and I would talk to them recently and they are going to be proceeding pretty soon. I don't have exact date, but I know.
My recommendation is can at the next planning commission meeting, this be discussed and we be briefed on what they plan on doing.
I would have to refer to Larry Manning regarding that issue.
We can't make that request?
I want to get the director's approval. Thank you.
I'm not quite sure, Commissioner Oars, what you would be debating and what information you really need to move forward with this issue.
Well, we've had a, a person in the public that has raised a very valid issue. About a section of road. That has been approved. That was an access road. For the purpose and, and, and for the purpose of being able to have. Sanctuary Point. To have Classic Home be able to extend and continue plating out their property and. But it is a problem now because if, if you want to say because of the pandemic, that's fine. But I think that the public does need to have some comfort that there is some kind of priority on taking care. Of correcting that road so it is a, a, a proper road. So I don't see any problem. With a report being made to the planning commission so that the public can hear it at the next planning commission meeting as to how that's going to be handled.
Well, I think, as you know, the approval of that road as it is, and it will be in the future, those approvals have been made. The responsibility to maintain and or improve based on. The public's or others desires is that of Tribe View Metro District. They took over maintenance of that road and I believe if there are issues with its safety, that's who needs to address them. But certainly if you can specify. What you would like to discuss. Possibly in a follow-up email, we, we certainly would discuss it. At your next meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, and. I, I'm not going to cut you short, Commissioner Oars. I'm sorry. I just want to, I want to second what Commissioner Oars is saying. And I think even, you know, as a topic of discussion, what it, it sounds like, and again, being relatively new to this area, being relatively new to the planning commission. That, you know, some things were set in motion, some changes happened, or some other things happened that deviated from the plan. And, you know, I'd like to know as possibly a topic of discussion, what our body can do about that. As opposed to just having to sit and, and take what was decided. Years prior, promises prior, COVID prior. And if there is anything that can be done, that might be another topic to discuss in that portion of our next meeting.
Certainly. And by the way, Chris, I, I want to. Thank you for you, way you ran this meeting tonight. Thought it was very orderly and done very well as a chairperson. But we will, we will pursue if, and I am asking that Mr. Oars. Send some kind of description, maybe what he just said, so that we can make sure we're prepared to present what might need to be discussed. And thank you.
Yeah, I, in fact, I'll get with the, Chris, if you don't mind, I'll get with you and together we'll put together something if it's all right with you.
Yeah, and I'll open it to any other planning commissioners as well, you know, just to get some bullet points and get staff as much information as, as possible for sure.
And then the other comment I've got. With regard to the comments about the road connecting to Higbee. That's not going to happen until El Paso County makes Higbee accessible from Glen Eagle. That's the big issue. And I just saw in the newspaper. Recently, it certainly Higbee didn't get any attention in the 2021 road plan for El Paso County. And so until El Paso County does something to Higbee, there's no one that's going to be able to, to drive. An effort to connect. To Higbee Road. That, that's just the end of that one. And then. With regard to the speed signs, I remember very clearly that speed signs were supposed to be placed on. Glen Eagle, but those speed signs were under the approval of the Home Place Ranch. So when Home Place Ranch starts their build out. At that time, they'll be expected to, to provide. The miles per hour so that people are driving. And that's, that's what I think Ms. Parrish was questioning. But that's my comments to the public comments.
Well, sir, with regard to Higbee. There have been for some time and hopefully will conclude soon discussions with the county. To take over Higbee Road by annexing it and putting it under the maintenance of Tribe View Metropolitan District. Tribe View has already been conducting studies as to how that road needs to be improved to handle the traffic. Once Glen Eagle disconnected. So. Thank you very much.
Any other commissioners want to comment at this time?
Are we just, are we just talking about the roads or anything?
Kind of anything, it sounds like.
Okay. This is Steve King. I have a statement that I want to make. And it's regarding Village of Jackson Creek. So I don't know how many people know here, maybe everybody does that. That went before the Board of Trustees. As a hearing and. They kicked it back to us, which I'm happy about. But. One of the comments that Mayor Wilson made in there was that. He didn't understand necessarily why the project was denied and he was asking for input, but we're not really permitted to. Communicate with them. So I just want to make a statement that's public so that they can, they can look at that or listen to it or whatever, and they can see. At least where I'm coming from and, and you guys can comment if you like to. This statement is my opinion solely and doesn't necessarily reflect any of the other commissioners. So I watched the. The hearing on the Village of Jackson Creek project that went before the Board of Trustees. When there, when there's a request for a zoning change, it doesn't necessarily mean that the applicants can keep. The existing zoning pieces that they want and add new pieces they desire, but don't yet have. It's a request for a change in the zoning, a request. It's give and take, it's negotiation. It's finding a blend that is good enough for the developer to make financial sense, but more importantly, good for the town. After all, when the project is complete, the developer will leave and whatever is granted for them to build, good or bad. Will now become the responsibility of the town and the town's residents and may or may not add to the benefit of the community or the residence property values. Just because a developer wants to build a particular project doesn't necessarily mean they'll be able to do so as they choose. Especially with requests for a zoning change and that problem should not become the problem of the planning commission or the Board of Trustees. It still needs to conform to the comprehensive plan, which may be interpreted differently by each commission member and staff. A comment was made at the hearing in order to justify. This project fitting into the comprehensive plan that the project has a main street and therefore satisfies the small town feel as noted by the comprehensive plan. That sounds to me like this project is its own town and not necessarily adding to the small town feel of Monument. Otherwise, the argument could be made that Disneyland has a main street to appear like a small town and therefore Disneyland could be allowed to be built in Monument. Our options regarding the motion to approve the application are approve, approve with conditions or deny. Deny is an option. Not every project should be approved with conditions, or then it's simply omit deny from the options. It was stated at the trustees hearing that there would be training for the planning commission in order to make motions with conditions. I can assure you that we can craft the motion with conditions if it's so warranted. When it's not warranted, deny is still an option. The applicant can then take the feedback from the hearing and alter the project to accommodate the commissioner's concerns. And bring it back if they so choose. In my opinion, circumventing the planning commission and taking the project to the Board of Trustees does not seem appropriate next step. Even if it is required procedure. This particular project had so many concerns by a majority of the commissioners that crafting a motion with conditions on the fly. Would more likely create a bigger issues than just sending it back to the drawing board. Not everything that is requested is appropriate to be built here. Otherwise, the commission would simply become a rubber stamp committee. If an applicant came to us with more defined plans, I for one would be more willing to approve a project that may be at the edge of what I consider appropriate. But I have to look at worst case scenarios when a project is vague and the applicant asks for many options. Especially when those options are high density and height allowances that are unprecedented in our town. And I'm, this is my second page here. Hold on. Economies change and the best plans change. And when desperate. Decisions are made in order to get out of a project because of economic downturns, the town is left with those bad decisions. The state is littered with bad developer decisions made because of a bad economy. Mayor Wilson asked why this project was denied, but there's not a transcript of our hearing given to the trustees. So they make decisions based on minimal information. There are plenty of comments made during our hearing and plenty of reasons given, including detailed reasons in the motion crafted by Chair O'Leary. We are not allowed to communicate with the trustees and the trustees aren't encouraged to watch our hearings. They get cliff notes of our hearings and whatever feedback that staff provides. That makes it difficult for us to truly convey our positions to the ultimate decision makers when a project is denied. Therefore, I'm stating this message publicly so that it is public record and the Board of Trustees can therefore have access to it if they choose to better understand what goes into my decision making process and maybe others on this commission. If anyone else here feels the need to add to this, please feel free. Thank you.
Can I just interject for one moment? When I do my, write my memo for the Board of Trustees, I put every one of your comments in there and the exact denial and I emailed Chris Wohomi to get the exact statement to put in the memo, say in the denial exactly, and your comments exactly too in the memo. Every memo I write, I put every single one of your comments in the memo.
It's just that they seemed confused and there's no ability for us to communicate back and forth, even though we're all kind of on the same team here. And personally, I I get that you don't control how how the process works, but I think that the comments that are made here, the concerns that are made here should go back to the applicant and then they should come back to us and then it goes before the Board of Trustees, because otherwise they have the ability to approve a project.
The applicant had a choice to either do not go to the Board of Trustees or present and possibly be denied or approved with conditions or sent back, and they wanted to take that risk. They had the option to go to the Board of Trustees or take it back to the planning commission without going to the Board of Trustees. They did have that option and they preferred, they wanted to present their case. And that's what happened.
I understand that. I just, I just feel like if if it goes to us and then they have another avenue to go to bypass us, we're kind of not really needed. And
But that's why it was sent back to you, because the Board of Trustees want, they want your input. They don't want to, how I took it for this particular project is that they want to make sure that the planning commission and the residents of the town of Monument are happy with the project for them to approve. I know this is probably not true in every case, but in this case, they wanted to bring it back to you for you to approve their, the changes that they possibly will make for this project. And that's why it was sent back to you.
Right. And I understand that I watched it, but again, my point is it could have gone there and they could have approved it and they're and the purpose of of the planning commission is to be, you know, the voice of the public, right? Okay, we have a different agenda than elected officials do. And that, I mean, that's all I have to say about it. I just, I, since we can't, since we can't communicate with them, if I make a public statement, then they can understand at least where I'm coming from and and I don't know where everybody else is coming from, but that's where I'm.
Please email me what you read, if that's okay, so I could have it typed written correctly to give to them.
Certainly, I'll do that.
Yeah, and I'll, this is just Commissioner Wohomi. I'll second what Commissioner King presented in his well articulated statement. Thank you, Commissioner King.
This is Larry Manning. I will take Commissioner King's statements as generic, although there were references to a specific project, which will now be coming back before you again. And those references could be taken a little bit awkwardly in terms of his potential decision. And so I would appreciate it if these stayed as generic conversations with regard to the procedure and not be project specific. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Commissioner Hours. I think that, you know, I I wasn't at the last, at the generic meeting we're talking about. But I did read the minutes. And I can understand why the board had a problem because there was nothing in there. It seems to me that we can be very specific in our recommendations. It takes a little while to put them together. It means we have to sit here a little longer, but for example, I know the the height of buildings was a big issue. But to read nowhere and even in the board's packet, there was nothing that said that the 90 foot was a concern.
Yes, it was in there about the height.
But that's what the
It was under Commissioner comments about the height.
Commissioner comments, but Commissioner comments and a recommendation from this, I think are two different things.
What the right, in the recommendation of denial was, had the height Yes, Chris wrote it. Chris, did it have the height mentioned in your denial?
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was in the Board of Trustees packet.
There was.
Yep, it was in there.
Not in the recommendation.
He mentioned it in the denial, the recommendation of denial, the height was mentioned.
It was mentioned, but it wasn't put in the recommendation that the board made.
The board recommended to bring it back to the planning commission.
No.
I'm sorry.
Hold on just a second. If you look at the plan, in the minutes for the planning commission's recommendation, there is not a height mentioned in there. It may have been comments, may, I I think the issue is the board is going to look, generically speaking, at the recommendations that we make. Now, we may make comments that have relation to those that recommendation, but if those, some of those specifics are not put in the recommendation, the board may very well not consider them.
And the applicant, when they presented, they did talk about the height.
Yeah, but no, I'm, I'm trying to talk generic now. I'm not trying to talk specific about that project. I'm just saying that our comments, if there are specific issues that we have concerns with, they would be better put in our recommendation instead of depending on the board looking at comments that the various commissioners make. Because they're focused on what we recommend. Not our comments necessarily, but what we recommend. And I think there's a big disconnect there.
This is Commissioner Treheu. I think when Chris brought that together as far as that denial, he was very thorough in identifying the complex plan and identifying how to best word that for the denial. As that went forward, I'm making the assumption that the the Board of Trustees understood exactly why we were
Yes.
Okay, so that was, that was very clear.
Yes.
I think, as Commissioner had noted as well, one of the things that we're faced with is again, making that decision on the fly. And again, Chris, I commend you for quickly being able to articulate that, I mean, and pull those pages out and actually prepare that on the fly. I think that was the one saving grace for that denial that clearly put a stop on this. I think in the future, I mean, even now, I'm starting to watch that a lot more clearer in relation to how those things are pre-planned because in the comprehensive plan, it becomes very restrictive for us to, like some people may assume, it is a rubber stamp. Well, it's not. And I think the more clarity that we have to put that denial in place is going to be, as we go forward, I think a lot more would probably be questioned if, now that we're starting to build that group as a board to get those concerns out there.
The issue that the board had, they were a little confused too, because this is the first, not first time they received a denial. But since the denial was so thorough, they, the the concern that they had that Commissioner King mentioned is why didn't they approve with conditions? Because the denial was so thorough, why didn't it go back approval with X, Y, Z conditions from the denial? Then that's what they were confused about because it was so thorough, the denial. And that's, that's how I took it at the hearing. And that's reason why it's sent back to the planning commission, because if they felt there were certain instances such as height and density that the applicant can change and possibly will change at the next hearing.
Great, thank you, Debbie.
Commissioner Hours again. Chris, I'm not criticizing what you put in there as the recommendation. I want to make that very clear. You know, years ago, and I've been on here since late 16, early 17, it was said that if the planning commission wanted to deny something, that we had to actually give a code. That, huh? Yeah, well, if you go back and look, that's some minutes. Now, that's been opened up that we just need to be very specific on why we're recommending something. And I I think we just need to get more specific in our recommendation, because I think that's what the the trustees focus on is what did they say in their recommendation, not necessarily what they said among one another that really has all the key points in it. Now, I need to shut up now. I've said that once before.
Perfectly concur. I mean, again, as Chris had built that, it was phenomenal. By referencing pages, I mean, sub paragraph, you got it. And I think that's what really sunk this down the line. So again, kudos to that.
Yeah, this is Commissioner White. I'm, I'm looking at the agenda packet and reading the the recommendation. And I I think it's comprehensive, but it definitely lacks a lot of the richness of the the conversation, back and forth discussion that we had. And and so those of us who are sitting in the meeting, I think, had had a lot more context so that the recommendation, you know, made a lot more sense. I personally don't feel offense at the board wanting us to to look at it again and and maybe clarify and provide some additional detail. I I personally am happy to do that. They they didn't have the context of all that rich discussion, but I think they've opened up the door for us to provide that to them. So apart from that, generically speaking, Steve, I I totally agree with with what you read. I I think we are representing the community and and we we have been chartered to to make sure that we look for not only the rights of individual landowners, but the town as a whole. And and we have to have all three of those options in our toolbox. Approve, approve with conditions and deny needs to be in the toolbox to ensure that we can carry out that that charter that we have to to look out for the community. So I I fully agree with with all the things you said. The the only difference is I I feel like the board sending it back just gives us an opportunity to maybe articulate more detail to them about why we made the decision we did.
Yeah, I'm happy that it's coming back to us. I, you know, I I don't have anything against a mixed use community, just, you know, there was just a lot, there was a lot to craft in a motion on this particular one that I wouldn't have wanted to do on the fly. And so hopefully they address those issues and they come back and and we can go through it again.
Yeah, yeah, I I concur.
I I got a question. Isn't there a, isn't there a means, and it may be Larry or Debbie or the chairman or so? Can we not table something that is brought to us and delay it to another meeting? Is that not part and parcel of what a commission can do?
It's, I feel is ultimately up to the board if they want to bring it back to you or not. And that's
I'm asking the question, is there not a process that a commission can table something that is brought before them for good reason?
I I believe that you could table an item. The applicant could make a decision to appeal that recommendation or that request to the board. So it would still go to them. Even if you were to table it, if they chose to do so, which obviously is not a real wise decision on their part. But we can't control that.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate that clarity. Thank you.
And Danny, just to to make sure I'm understanding what you're suggesting, sometimes we want to craft maybe a approve with conditions on the fly and we want to maybe take some thoughtful time to to consider rational conditions so that, so that we don't do it in a knee jerk way. Is that kind of what you're proposing?
That's correct.
Yeah, makes perfect sense to me. It, I think that's a a tool we should consider as a commission. If if it's complex and and we think that maybe we could provide better conditions by thinking about it and and coming back at the next meeting.
Well, the the reality of it is that your decisions have to be based solely upon the testimony at the meeting. And therefore, your idea of contemplating things in between one meeting and another doesn't really fit into the context of that. So I would suggest that what you do is you ask them if they would agree to tabling the applicant and ask them to address specific items when they come back for your consideration. Rather than you suggesting that you're going to go somewhere, some coffee shop and and discuss how you want to handle this, so to speak.
And and I think, Larry, I think that's right. I think part of the tabling process is to communicate with who you're working with to see if they will agree with the table. And give them a good reason at that point in time.
Yeah, what you don't want to do is infer and certainly not, in fact, conduct additional considerations either on your own or with other commissioners in between those two events.
Larry, I'd like to address that. I think as human beings, we we process information and and there there is a contemplation that can happen. And the fact that we don't get any new information doesn't mean that we can't chew on it and draw a different conclusion or or come up with some other ways to deal with the information we got at the meeting. I I don't think that going off and and contemplating it is foregoing the notion that we're we're using just the information we got during that that meeting from the applicant.
Well, I'm just suggesting what I believe the law is. And the law is that you only consider what you hear at the meeting as testimony. And any considerations outside of that could be considered prejudgment on the project.
Sure, it could, it could carry the appearance of using information not presented in the meeting.
Well, I guess I always liken it back to a judge in in on a trial. And that's what you are. The the judge likely, I assume, will not, in between trials, go back and contemplate what his decision is going to be, but rather would only judge his decision on what is heard in the courtroom.
Okay, so are you suggesting that postponing decision with the information presented should not be something we consider and that we should only consider raising our concerns in the meeting and asking the applicant to come back at the next meeting to address those with new information or new design or new approaches?
Yes, I've put a burden on the applicant to understand what your concerns are to agree, hopefully, to your tabling and 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 to the request that they address those issues when they come back. That way, the applicant's making decision as to whether it's a good thing for them, which is the best posture.
All right, I I can agree with that. I can live with that, I think.
And I would just add, if if the applicant then does not agree with us on the table, then the only other option that we would have at that time would be to sit here and put together a very specific recommendation to the trustees.
That's certainly one of your options. It's a difficult job for you. Obviously, in a cer- certain situations where there are a number of concerns. And it may not not be anything you can arbitrate at that meeting. If it's something you think you can, if it's simple, if it's a couple items, density, height, something like that, it's certainly within your purview to ask them whether they would consider that. And 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 then again, then make those conditions upon your recommendation.
Yeah, in fact, I see, I I read the the board's packet and I see where the in the generic one. in the generic one we're talking about, that they did in fact make some amendments before they got to the board of trustees of things that they were willing to do based on hearing your conversations here at the meeting that I was not at. So, I mean, I think everybody wants to work together, but I, I think that, you know, I've been on here since sixteen or seventeen, late sixteen or early seventeen. This is the first denial. First denial that I know of. Larry, there's never been another denial, has there?
No.
Four or five years.
Yeah, recommendations for approval with conditions. Most of those projects where they're talking about were probably not as complex as some of the ones you're seeing these days.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I'm, I'm just glad it all happened the way it happened. I just, I think.
Commissioner Hours, this is, this is Chris, Commissioner Wohomi. Quick question. So was it your understanding that there was some modification that was made by the applicant before the board of trustees, some change that
They, they, yeah, they went forward to the board of trustees. And they did come back in and say, we were willing to, I forget the specifics, but height was one of them. But again, since Larry said we're supposed to be talking generic, that particular app, applicant did in fact make some revisions as they went. So there was effectiveness there. But obviously, thank goodness, the board of trustees said we need even a little more clarity.
Yeah, the board of trustees wanted to get, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Larry.
This, this is up to the board. And it would not be unusual for a board or a city council routinely, when a change comes forward to them, to refer it back to the planning commission. It's certainly up to them to do so. And I think ultimately, that's why they did it. But the applicant made the choice to see if they could convince the board by changing their application to get a, an approval. That, that's purely on them. And I think the board made the right choice. It probably would have been maybe a better decision for the applicant to make that on his own. And, and, and go to the board at that time and say, listen, we've got a couple of concerns the planning commission had. And we would like to go back and discuss those with you. But it is up to the board whether they accept those changes and certainly is a, a matter of how serious those changes are. If they're minor, the board might make their own decision. These, some of them are not minor. And it's not unusual for a board or a council in this scenario with its relationship with the planning commission to not accept changes that are made after the planning commission's consideration.
And a follow up question to that, this is Commissioner Wohomi. I, I assume, and I applaud what the board did. Don't get, no doubt about that. But were they made aware by the applicant or by staff of these differences in the application?
Yes.
Which one? Both?
Yes.
Without being specific, there were a couple important parameters that they, they thought were addressing concerns in their particular project that they made changes to.
Okay. I just, you know, again, generically, I think that ability to do that from a process side, this has nothing to do with the specific applicant or the specific project. The process side, that basic, in my mind, that almost nullifies the planning commission, its role and its ability to, you know, take its time once a month or a couple of times a month to, to consider, to put thought into it. I'm glad the board was able to make its decision as it did, but in terms of that concerns me from the process side, that the applicant would be able to modify and sort of tweak, you know, it kind of get a feel for the land and, and get past the, the planning commission, so to speak, and just get right to the meat and potatoes of, all right, let's talk to the board of trustees where, that's where the action's at. Pardon the slang and the vernacular, but it's, it just seems that I would love to have some sort of address on procedurally how that can happen or would happen. And obviously, it doesn't happen very often because we don't have very many denials. And just my final comment, when it comes to just being in front of a judge a lot in my line of work, I can tell you that judges take things under submission frequently and, and reserve that decision frequently. But I will say before we go into this tabling, I, I would love to have some process, some, some of our process worked out in terms of what we can expect internally, as well as to tell the applicant what to do before we even get into the world of tabling or putting things under submission.
Well, I can, I can guarantee you in almost all cases, staff has conversations with the applicant about this. So it doesn't go undiscussed in that arena as to what staff feels would be the best thing to do. So we do the best job we can at guiding the process to the point where the applicant would have the best opportunity. Sometimes they don't choose to follow our advice.
Understood.
But can I make a final comment? And that normally, like the adjustments that are under discussion here, the applicant normally, when they go to the trustees, point out that there were concerns here. And that based on the concerns that we had here, that they are willing to do this or that. So it's not, it's not that they go present a different program, project to the, but they go saying these faults were found with ours and we're willing to do this. So I'm just trying to
They submitted the same preliminary PD site plan. There was no changes to it. But in their presentation, they discussed what happened at planning commission and
Yeah, which, which still puts us, puts our, our, some of our concern, but they didn't address all the concerns real well, but that's, this don't get too far.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll make my, my final comment. This is, this is my, my eleventh year as a planning commissioner and, and I have seen some denials that they've appealed and gone, in, in, in my case, before the city council. And they, they have approved them or even changed things that we've done in the past. And it doesn't always work out all that well when they, when they go that way. Mainly because they have a, have a little bit of a different agenda. They're elected and they're not appointed and they have to kind of dance around that. And I understand that there is an appeal process. I just wish that the appeal process was after it came back through us for the second time. And then we either made the conditions unreasonable or denied it. And then they could go through that appeal process. And, you know, that's a topic for a different conversation, but that's all I have about that.
Can I give an update on something? I've talked to Jerry Doll, who is the lawyer working on our code rewrite. And he does, on behalf of DOLA, does planning commission training. And he has agreed to do a Zoom one. I don't have a date yet. I still need to go out the specifics with him. Would that be something you would be interested in? On topics like these that we're having today? To discuss the legality of it all. So in the future, we know how to vote correct, make a recommendation correctly. And so the board understands where you're coming from. And that, that could be part of the training that he provides. You're doing a it'll be through Zoom. It'll be through Zoom. So however, just wanted to get a feeling if everyone agrees that DOLA training again through an attorney with the planning background would be doing the presentation this time. Yep.
Get, getting better at what we do, I think is something we should all be open to, you know, he- hearing different perspectives, getting additional knowledge. I'm all for it.
I have a brief report on a subject that came up in public comment. If it's appropriate right now, Chairman. I'd like to speak to the progress of Jackson Creek Parkway north of Higbee. We currently have funding available to design that project in 2021. And we're just awaiting CDOT's approval of our, it's called an obligation letter, at which time we can then advertise that. So that would design the entire stretch from Higbee, including the intersection all the way up to 105. So we feel that will be done by the end of the year or shortly thereafter. We also have funding for construction in 2022. However, it's not near the amount to do the entire project. So we're hoping that our particular funding will get us intersection improvements and at least north of the YMCA north entrance and the school as well to do those improvements. We also will be working with the developers along the northern part of that route to find a way to fund the balance of that. So it's not going unnoticed and we are progressing. And I think we will do well in the next 12 months to moving forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
And I have, if, if I may, we do have a board of adjustments that needs positions filled. And according to our municipal code, one planning commissioner is responsible to be on the board of adjustments. As you know, they don't meet as often. And we were wondering if we can get a volunteer to be on the board of adjustments.
What's the date for?
There's no, there's no project right now. It's just to have, in case something comes up, which is very rare, just so we have somebody from the planning commission to sit on the board of adjustments. Thank, thank you, Commissioner King.
All right, any other reports? I, I thank you guys for your time, but just, I don't want to short it at all, but I think it was a really good discussion. Any other comments or reports at this time? All right. Having hearing none, we'll just say announcements. It, it appears that there's a March 10th meeting. Is that correct, staff?
Yes.
All right.
There will be two or three items on that agenda.
Okay, thank you. So please look forward to that and subsequent emails. All right, let's just adjourn. So I will move to, to close this meeting. And again, thank you, everyone, for your comments. If, I, I don't even know, do I need a second on that or can I just? I don't know.
I have no idea.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your time. We'll see you shortly. And then, you know, just a, a final note, Danny and I will circulate just some thoughts into what we talked about earlier, some bullet points to provide to staff regarding what we'd like to maybe talk about next, next meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, and thank you all for your service.